Hey, good evening. I have 6:30. I'm going to call to order meeting number 1883 of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are live in the John Daly Meeting Room of the Town Hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We have a quorum. We have three regular members and one alternate present in the room, and we have one regular member on Zoom. Do we have any added agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Wayne?
Yes.
We will have you participate in any voting.
Yes.
Mike, thank you. Okay. Now, do we have any?
Okay, thank you.
There's no legal notice. So we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Do not have anybody present on Zoom. So we will move right on to approval of minutes. We have the minutes of the last meeting that was held on October 8th, 2024, meeting 1882. Does anyone have any additions or corrections?
No.
So if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes for meeting number 1882 dated Tuesday, October 8th, 2024.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Wayne, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And abstain. Minutes are approved. Seat of applications. We have one application. It is PZ 2024-16. The applicant owner is MJMT Enterprises LLC, Precision Developers LLC, requesting a special use permit for a 10-lot residential subdivision, including two rear lots located at East Road and Reservoir Ave., MAP 100, Block 78, Lot 005. The zone is R3. This application will be reviewed at a future meeting. Nothing under Performance Bound Action Permit to road extensions. The we're now going to go to our continued public hearing. We have PZ 2024-14. The applicant owner is Rice Street Business Park LLC. He's requesting a special use permit modification of approved site plan at 95 Rice Street to allow outside storage and change in use from large building to be used as a museum and meeting place for private club located at MAP 67, Block 48, Lot 24, in the M1 Zone. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Member of the Commission. My name is Dave Zayaks. I'm a professional engineer with FA Hesketh Associates. And last month, I believe my partner Guy was here for most of the presentation before you. I'm filling in for him this evening. Also in the audience is Steve Dearborn, who's a principal with the applicant. This is a continuation of the special permit and site plan modification. Well, first of all, I want to say this has been a while since I've been in East Windsor, for whatever reason. I seem to skirt all around East Windsor. But the pleasure being back, by the way. Thank you. And it's for a farm tractor museum and a place for private club meetings in the main building, number one and number two, this much smaller building. And it was for site plan modifications to include some outdoor storage, as shown on the site plan, and for parking for 45 vehicles, which would include three ADA parking spaces. The existing tenant in the building in the rear, building number three, would remain. That's a car hauling business, which is a permitted use. We did a full presentation, from what I understand, at the last meeting. Meeting was left open to clean up some staff, planning staff and town engineering comments and some Department of Health comments. Plans were revised 9/17/2024, which would be the plan before you this evening. Staff has previously indicated that there would be no wetlands permit required. The town engineer and the fire marshal have no remaining comments. The Health District was contacted by both the applicant and town staff, and there are no remaining concerns. They did, from what I understand, recommend a condition that, which staff noted in their conditions to you, of adding a location of existing septic systems to the plans based on public threat. We did receive late this afternoon a letter of approval from the Health District, which I understand is now in the record. There is a permit for the town aquifer protection from the town aquifer protection agency, which remains valid. It's in place until July 2028, at which time the applicant would have to go before them and renew that application for that permit. A written narrative about five pages long was submitted with the special permit application, which outlines the considerations per year section 701. And we believe that the application addresses and meets all the criteria included in that section, as outlined in our narrative. Staff has prepared a new draft motion for you with 15 conditions of approval that we looked at this afternoon. And we take no exceptions to those conditions being included in the approval of the application. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll start them. Warren, Wayne, do you have any questions on this application?
No.
Stacy?
Good for now.
Nope. Just, I did watch the video. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch the video of it. And I know that there was also brought up hours of operation was one of the things. So I do see that that has also been added into the terms and conditions. So the items that I saw that were a question were approval from the Water Committee, which we have, the North Central, which we have, and then the hours of operation. So I think we've addressed all the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. Correct? So are there any outstanding issues at all?
Just looking at the Connecticut Water Company letter, we didn't add this condition. But there is one here that says maintenance and refueling of vehicles should occur should occur within aquifer protection area. And where this cannot occur outside of the aquifer, refueling should be done for the spill containment measure in place and spill control equipment kept on site. And I know that Mr. Dearborn has a materials management plan and you've I'm sorry. The water company said that refueling and maintenance of vehicles have to be in the champ over the aquifer protection area. And if it can't be, then you'd need to have materials available. That's part of the materials.
And what kind of materials?
They just got a fuel across the side. That's not a big deal.
Fuel has been in there 50 years. Cleaned it up. I got rid of the pollution guys. Done everything. Doesn't seem to How much?
What do we need? Speedy dry? I got 50 bags of speedy dry in my bill.
How much fueling is going to occur there, really? How much fuel are you actually going to be using there? You're not
Fuel?
Yeah, this is what they're talking about. Fuel to fuel vehicles, the trucks?
Just fuel them inside the building. I got to do Steve.
Fuel anything else. We have no tanks, no pumps.
So when you restore a vehicle?
When I go in there, I take five gallon cans of gasoline and diesel fuel, and I take a funnel and I open it.
That's it. Okay, that's it.
So that's all they're asking is that it's not done outside.
My point.
And all the trucks get fueled up and stationed. There's no way of fueling anything on site. You don't have anything, nothing. I have a tank in my pickup. I use, you know, transferred tank. Nothing on the site, nothing.
The point of the comment, it's in there, it's water company's recommendations. And the point was to bring up the fact that Mr. Dearborn has a materials management plan. Okay. That includes spill response.
It's part of the aquifer permit already. Yes.
Okay.
So he's good to go.
So as long as he follows his aquifer permit, everything's good there. Dave, do you have any questions on this application?
No, sir. I asked a couple of questions last time, and I'm satisfied.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience in the public that would like to speak on this application? Okay. So if anybody doesn't have anything else to add, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing, PZ 2024-14. Advocate owner Rice Street Business Park LLC requesting a special use modification of approved site plan at 95 Rice Street to allow outside storage and change in use for a large building to be used in a museum and meeting place for private club. MAP 67, Block 48, Lot 24, Zone M1.
There's a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Okay.
By Wayne, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, the public hearing is closed. Hey. Everybody got all the information they need? We're ready to pull the vote. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve PZ 2024-14 of Rice Street Business Park LLC for a special use permit with a site plan modification to include outdoor storage and the change of use of the main industrial building to a museum and meeting place for a private club at property located at 95 Rice Street, MAP 67, Block 48, Lot 24, Zone M1s. On the, with the two findings, the proposal satisfies the acceptable special permit criteria of Chapter 7 of the East Windsor zoning regulations. The Tractor Museum, or finding number two, the Tractor Museum should showcase the town's farming heritage and reflective of one of the primary strategies of the 2016 plan of conservation development to preserve community assets, culture, historical and agricultural. Disapproval is granted subject to conformance with the reference plan and may be modified by the commission in approval and the following conditions and modifications. One and two for reference plans, and then conditions one through 15. Oh, 16, 16. Oh, I didn't get 16. 16. Ruth in Calabrese, our town planner.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ruth?
You know, we had Mr. Hammond, we had our Oracle Society meeting. They have, you know, these types of tractors. They took pictures, and that's national. Took pictures of everything, and we actually got a national recognition.
Congratulations.
It's a thing of fantastic. Yeah. Saw the, up on the computer, the guy sent across the country. He didn't disappoint. Got national recognition.
Congratulations.
Sitting on the ground side would be very happy.
Thank you.
George.
Thank you. Okay. We have no new public hearings. We have no old business, no new business. We're moving on to other business. We have an informal discussion of MAP 265 South Main Street for a contractor office and storage conceptual plan. You don't have this electronically that you could put up for Dave to see it all, do you?
No. No, he just brought it.
Okay.
What to do is knock down that barn? Build a
Where are we? Oh, is that the old music barn?
Yes.
Oh, I know where you're at.
Yeah.
That's quite set back from the road quite a bit.
Look, there was a distance from the wetlands to the building with 86 feet. I know it has to be 150 feet, but the new building will be 150 feet from the wetland.
We'll build that. Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah. That music barn has been for sale forever.
Yes.
We're going to pay the 1.2 million for it.
One reason I jumped on, you wanted to go on the back section of the property, I guess it's A1 or A2, and she really can't do too much with it.
Jump.
Yeah, I like this.
I didn't really want that Scantic part, but they told me they're going to buy it all on one side. Yeah. Well, potentially in the future, not right now. If I can, I'd like to sort of knock the lots, put a house or two back there if I could. But I'm not really sure how, what to do. I'm concerned about building out.
But why is he here?
This is what this can require us. So it's going to require a special use permit for this, or?
I called and said, you gotta go in front of the committee. Yeah, this is my only do.
So it was
Two area.
No, I like it. I'm glad that building, but probably finally going to get sold. That's forever. 30 years. Long time. You got E more than X nine guy.
See actual classification of usage it's going to be?
I wondered if it's as a warehouse.
Have your equipment there and
Yeah, my equipment's always on site, so it's not like they're actually going to be there.
When it's going to come back?
As soon as I have an equipment, I'm in salt building right now. Maybe it's kids here.
It is, how big is that film?
That's going to be 8,000 for a
Do I have a different truck? Mine is empty under the tubes. This, there's nothing.
Yes, it's empty. But I had contractors' office and storage yard is actually what I was looking at.
Okay.
So it's going to be all for you? Are you going to rent days? You know?
It'll be all for me pretty much, but I, if I could, one section, I'll have a note that I'm going to have on, for a double side to you know, landscaper, electrician, whoever get forward to get a little base to help you.
So the problem we have is like, you know, you get into like automotive and stuff. That's, yeah, that's where the oil
Yeah.
Oil water separator.
I'm sure, you know, as Danielle was looking at this, she was thinking, you know.
Like Newbury Road.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to avoid that hole.
So It's It's your storage yard, or is it? Yeah, okay. And will you have materials outdoors?
You see.
Like storage?
Yeah, I got my yard right now. And that's better road. I do have like, what was that, a job?
I think you have somebody trying to get in. Go ahead.
So like right now, I got material that come off a job, it stops low. I either clean it, I have a little spirit or a little vibrator, those two will take some stuff out of it, and I go back out to another job. Another job site. I don't, I'm not going to plan on crushing or anything like that unless I mean can, I'd like to, but that's not what's in my mind.
If you can go over with it. I mean, that's for like a, like a
Yeah, for that, they're going to process and it's all That's
Yeah, I like the idea. I mean, they said that property's been vacant forever.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, and we welcome new business in town, that's for sure.
You're planning on putting the building roughly in the same location where the barn is now, or?
Yeah, so I want, obviously, I want to be within 160 feet. I think anyone told me I have to be in the wetlands. So, yeah, I might bring it back away from the wetlands and I'm probably, so I'm right there.
Yeah.
You have any questions, Dave, at all?
No, nope. I think it's a great idea. Finally used up that piece of property that's been vacant for so long, like Jim said.
I have a few questions, but that's small. I noticed that you called the old music barn, but it wasn't actually a tobacco barn. Does it have sewer and water going into the building?
It must have something. It was open for general public. Well, no, I don't know.
It was a music store at one point.
At one point, yeah.
Yeah, so
They have it down the main road, I guarantee it.
Okay, so if it doesn't, I could always tap in, but then
Yeah, I'm sure they must have, I doubt they have something.
I don't know. But we can find out.
Yeah, wouldn't the land records have all that?
I'll just call down to DOT.
TW. But it's definitely available on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Connecticut Water may have a look up right on their website, put in an address and they
But I'm sure there had to been a restroom there because of being a retail store.
There hasn't been anything in there since
Oh, it's been a long time, yeah.
Yeah, I went inside it, and I was like, I don't want to walk anymore, there's ceiling coming in. Why are you going to reuse it? I'm like, no, I don't think so.
Did you purchase it already? Yeah.
No, so I in my contract, and I want to make sure that I can get approvals for town and
Yeah.
my building, which that's not going to prove at all.
That's why you're here for an appointment. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah. I buy a piece a lot.
I get it, I get it. They'll deny it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so once you make your decision, or if you go forward.
I'm really wrong.
I'll just go help you with that application, what you need.
Okay. I got it, I got it. I got the land surveyor already going out next week. And Morgan is ready to make up my design of the civil plans unless I give him a down payment. I want to make sure I'm okay before I pay them, and it's time to turn them over, so once that's all good, we'll start making a plan.
Would any of our exterior guidelines apply to this area here?
Oh.
As far as, yeah. Okay, I mean, we have recommendations in some of our regs and stuff, just the aesthetics of what we'd like to see the exterior, you know. You know, a little, sometimes little masonry or some kind of
Too tall.
Full finishes that are kind of, that it's not just a big metal pan.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So that's going to be a two-story building.
Okay.
I'm planning on putting like some plants in the front. I'm not, obviously, I'm trying to tie my company, so
Well, that should go on the site plan.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Super exciting. Get rid of that, get rid of that property, yeah.
You're ready, come on by.
Okay, so I
Have your type with Danielle.
Okay, I never came in.
In the hallway in the right.
Right at the end.
I still in the right.
I'll survive sometime, maybe tomorrow.
Okay, we're here until seven on Thursday.
This Thursday is the haunted highway.
Following Thursday's
I know it's an African building right there, and you're like, what?
Thanks for the offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
See you soon. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the CEO report.
White.
Wow.
We're here, here to submit their application to the Indianland Agency on a mitigation. The wetlands still
Yeah.
West River Farm is to kill on the NOV with regard to the campus of Open Space and She's Danielle, everything yellow, she's taken off, I believe. 142, she's been checking, they're still compliant. You recall they came for a question for the site plan?
Yeah.
And then we're taking up a number of items that are no longer enforceable due to he sheds at 93 roads. Permitted, I don't like it.
It's at the neighbor's house.
Neighbor's housing, okay.
Not that I drop by every day, but I drop by every day. My way to work.
Uh, let's see, 116 square, 50 That is, this is just getting further and further. I'm getting very much into, she wrote this.
Good. All right, that's all. Okay. Next, we have a 824 referral, town-owned property on Rice Road, which is MAP 106, Block 30, Lot 1.
Oh, Rice Road.
Yep, it is where Old Wells and Rice.
Yeah, where's that pick?
You get it? It looks like this.
Yeah, I got your
So I got a call from a date that was interested in purchasing that property. Property itself was acquired by the town through a tax. The lot is 1.3 acres. It was previously owned by Margaret Lou's. The parcel is owned A1. It's free of easement. Could qualify as a builder's sound for developed parcel. Let's
So where is this?
Is there, is there a number associated with the property at all?
It's vacant. There's farmland. I should have put aerial there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to pull up a Google Earth or something on it.
Same thing.
Yeah, if you can pull it up then.
Share my screen.
Well, that's the product across from my father's house. I think.
Is it the heavily wooded?
It's right next to 83.
83 is
I mean, it's that heavily wooded area there?
Yeah, I bet it is. So let me just
I mean, that's, that's been a lot for years, and they were trying to build on that a long, 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 long time ago. And they couldn't because it's all wetlands in there. So what do you want to do? Who wants to?
In there? I didn't show wetlands in, in there. There's
Twenty, 30 years ago. They changed the water for us, and they flooded my father's basement. About 30 years ago.
About 30 years ago. Well, who wants to buy that?
Your butter?
Oh, your butter, or neighbor wants to buy it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's, uh, I don't.
It's across, it's a, it's a, it's across the street.
Yeah, I don't care.
I mean, a question that I always ask is, do, does this need to go to a public sale, you know, is that, is that?
Well, all, all this does is refer it over to the Board of Selectmen, they haven't, and they could decide how they would do it, like, some, yes.
It's a general public.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no value to, eh, open space or anything else to go like that for this piece of property.
So it's, they're saying it's a buildable lot.
Health dimensions, right? I, you know, the health department will have to. Unless there's water out there.
There's, uh.
There's water on, uh.
It runs across, oh.
No, it's in Connecticut Water.
Oh, yeah, they're now, now, now they're, yeah, yeah, it almost like sheet blow water, water.
Yeah, they know water service to this property.
No. What's on the groundwater? It used to come across the street and flood the whole lot. And, yeah, we're trying to build a house there legally, this is about 40 years, probably.
Is, uh, anybody got any comments or questions on this?
Let me just ask you a question about the map, so, talking about the blue triangle area, and the, the diagonal blue lined area represents?
Water? Upland review, it's upland, it's like, it's the jurisdictional area for the inland, the green is the, it would have to be field delineated, because this, the GIS of our wetlands map is not exact. So, anything that happens there will need to go through the whole permitting process and.
I don't have a problem with that, it's same with I.
So is that the same thing we stopped last time, from the people filing it?
Well, no, that was, that was a, uh,
This doesn't.
subdivision, trying to, that was open space, I don't have time to purchase, so, this is actually town-owned property.
It's a single lot owned by the town, but no easements.
Yeah.
Again, these little postage pieces of property that the town owns or.
And liable for.
Right. Okay, you got anything, Dave, on this?
No, no.
Yeah, you're at a disadvantage, and you get to see the paperwork on it.
That's okay, I can tell where it is.
Okay, so, uh, we need a motion to, uh, make a, uh.
For consideration. All right, I'll make a motion to make a positive referral as required by the Connecticut General Statute, section 824, to the Board of Selectmen for the sale of a vacant town owned 1.34 acre parcel located on Rice Road, identified on assessors MBL 106 dash 30 dash 001.
There's a motion for positive referral, do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
Second by Wayne. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, make the referral. We had on our agenda for election of officers and review of bylaws. Um, in our existing bylaws, all regular members need to be present in order for us to have an election, since Anne is not here, we can't hold the election, but we can do a review of the bylaws. One suggestion that has come up, uh, was for us to add the pledge of allegiance to our agenda. So, that would be added, yeah, so that would be in the order of business in 4.5. Does that usually happen after establishment of quorum, or when does that usually take place?
Before, very first thing.
Or before they call the orders first?
Yeah.
And then it'd be the second item?
I think it's right in the bylaws.
Well, the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, bylaws have the order, but to add it into the order of business, it would be added in after the call order?
Yes, get a quorum.
So you have to establish a quorum first. I'm, I'm asking, because if we're gonna, if we're gonna add it, we need to know where we're going to add it into the, into the.
The only one who does it the first level, that meeting.
I mean, first of all, is everybody in agreement, is anybody opposed to doing it?
I'm not, Daniel.
I'm okay with it if we wanna do it.
Okay, so then that's all, we just have to establish as to where in the agenda it goes, I just wanna have it correct, so.
Selectmen do it first, WPCA does it first.
Before they even call the meeting to order?
No, you have to call a meeting to.
So it comes second right after call the order, okay.
First item, agenda.
Going back to third grade. Flashbacks.
Were there any other added edits or suggestions to our, uh, bylaws that anybody would like to bring up?
Well, follow Robert's rule, order right.
It's all hounded.
At the end, it might be membership that. Did you take it out?
Or?
Previous versions of the bylaws that had, um, the members of the commission, basically, the last page.
Well, there is, there is, I mean, there's just stuff as far as, uh, terms and.
But it actually missed.
Oh.
We may have taken it out previously.
We just have.
Got out of date.
Yeah, we have rights, we have disqualification, resignations. And then the different officers. Terms of. Table, yeah. Okay, so do we need a, uh, motion to amend the bylaws? Excellent. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, amend the bylaws as we.
Mend the bylaws to include the, uh, even the flag and.
Pledge of allegiance?
Yeah. Thank you.
We have a motion to amend the bylaws to include the pledge of allegiance, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. So this will commence as of our January meetings, is that when this will take effect?
We could do that.
Okay, so we'll do it as, as of our first January meeting. And then we'll just, uh, hold our election of officers when, next meeting that we have our full regular members. Under correspondence, under the farmers' listening session, we did receive a correspondence, it's in your packet, from Steve Wise. I'm not gonna read it into the record, but it is posted in the meeting materials, and you all have a copy of it. We have nothing under business meeting, no need for an executive session. If anybody doesn't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:10 PM.